All right, good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock on 28 July. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the City Council for Madison. And with that, we'll call Pastor John Dees with Crosspoint Church to do the invocation.
So I'll just take a moment to be silent before the Lord. Just take a moment to tell the Lord today how much you love him. And ask his forgiveness for anything that is between you and him. And take a moment just to say thanks for all of his blessings that he's given. And Father, it is such an awesome privilege to call you our heavenly Father. And just like your prayer taught us, our Father. And we believe that. I pray for this meeting tonight. I thank you for Madison, Alabama. I thank you for the United States. I thank you for the state of Alabama. And I thank you for this great little town, and not so little anymore. Thank you, Lord, for all your blessings upon it. I pray your guidance over this mayor and over this city council and those that have been given the privilege of directing us. So give them wisdom and give them strength. And Father, we thank you, Lord, for blessings that are too numerous to even mention them all, but we thank you, thank you, thank you. We thank you for air conditioning tonight. And what a blessing that is. And Lord, it's helped us to always realize that one of the greatest blessings we can ever have is just to realize what a blessing being able to have gratitude is. And we are so grateful to you for all the great things we've done, that you've done. And now we trust your leadership in this meeting tonight. And we pray it in the matchless name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, through the flag of the United States of America, in this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get the roll call, please?
Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Robleski. Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Yeah.
Councilmember Seifert.
Here.
All right, are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, we have one amendment, which is to remove Resolution 2025-137R under the Legal Department's line item, and that is in agreement with the Heritage Plantation HOA for Greenway Connection.
Okay, all right.
Is that at their request? That, taking that off the agenda, was that their request? Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Thank you for that clarification. And with that, we will move into approval of the minutes. And first up was our regular session on 14 July.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. And we do not have any presentation and awards scheduled for tonight. And so that will move into public comments. And just a reminder for everyone, we don't have anybody signed up ahead of time, but just a reminder, if you'd like to address council this evening, we'll give you three minutes. And if you can, when you start, state your name, address, or district for the record. And keep your comments to three minutes or less. So with that, is there anyone here that would like to address council? Sir?
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Jim Chamberlain. I'm in District Seven, and I'm president of the local organization Madison Greenways and Trails. And I'd just like to give you a brief report about our accomplishments in the past year and some plans for the upcoming year, including a special projects request that will be on, I believe, your agenda next council meeting. We're a city-sponsored organization, and we serve on the recreational advisory board and work closely with Corey Alfred. And we've been very active the last few years, you may have noticed, with our partners, the Land Trust of North Alabama and with the city of Madison. We built a beautiful new trail in Rainbow Mountain Preserve in 2023, 2024. We had 40 volunteers work over 700 hours on the trail over 18 months. And one nice thing about this new trail is that it connects into the preserve from the bottom of the mountain and allows hundreds of homes in the Eastview area, folks to just walk into the preserve instead of driving to the top. And this is a great benefit, and this also increases the property values, if you've seen real estate reports, when you're adjacent to a preserve. So since completing the new trail, we've continued improving the other four miles of Rainbow Trails, removed a lot of fallen trees, tornado damage, cleaned up litter, and logged several hundred more hours. And it's, I think it's fair to estimate, we've done the equivalent of about $40,000 worth of work in the last two years, if you, it had a commercial organization do it. So the city recognized the need for a new local preserve to supplement Rainbow Mountain with our booming community. And we began initial planning and development, working with the city and the land trust on the 60 acres that are Mill Creek Bet Spring. And those are right in central Madison, a wonderful location, close to many neighborhoods. Now, the Madison On Track Comprehensive Plan promotes low-impact development of this area and calls Mill Creek high priority. And the first trail in the new preserve is dubbed, for now, Old Providence Trail. It's named after the 200-year-old community along Balch Road and includes the historic Gray Cemetery, which was rediscovered in the late 1990s by John Rankin, and that's being restored. So this trail will be adjacent to that. It'll be a very nice place for families to visit. So in next council, I believe, our special projects requests will come requesting building materials, tools, and a preliminary design to be performed by the land.
All right, with that, is there anyone else that would like to address council?
Margie Daly, Karen's District, number six. Okay, so I come in and I have a pair of rounded, blunted Dollar Store scissors in my purse because I had to cut something and I jumped in the Dollar Store to buy them. They were removed from my purse. I was told, yes, sharp objects. They're rounded, they're child scissors. They're not a sharp object. I feel like I'm not in a free country anymore here. Our speech has been reduced from five minutes to three minutes. We would ask the council that now that there has been a change in council president, that you restore our free speech, our five minutes, our ordinances read here with public hearings of five minutes on each reading, as it was before. Council Bartlett took over presidency of the council. She took away our free speech. So I really think that it's time to restore it. Council President Seifert, there's a few of us that come up and talk. I know it was done during the city manager when things were tense, but it's not necessary now. We have very few speakers. So what you took away was the decorum when we come up and we say how we love our city and what's great about our city. That's what you cut, the two minutes before, you know, now we only have three minutes. So what do we get to do? Maybe speak on two things that are on the council tonight. But I only think it's fair that we return free speech to the council meetings. And as far as the rounded scissors, they're not a sharp object. I could see if I had actual hair-cutting scissors or something, I was told I could stab somebody with them. You can't stab somebody with the Dollar Store rounded scissors. It's just ridiculous. Now, these wayfinding signs, another $125,000. They don't have lights, they don't have a solar panel, they, you know, all we need is an app for the city, a city app. Get around the city. I mean, to spend, you know, already, what is it, a half a million we're in? And this is only Phase Two. I don't know how many phases are planned, but just create an app. We have so many people here that are capable of creating an app. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else that would like to address council this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comments and move into consent agenda and finance committee report.
Okay, the finance committee has reviewed the regular imperative bills to be paid. And on the tonight's consent agenda, we have a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a quote for cable television services with WOW Business with the Public Safety Annex for no cost. We're authorizing the mayor to accept a quote from Tyler Technologies for payroll and HR software and support services, one-time fee of $3,955, and then an annual fee of $396 to be paid for the HR department budget. And acceptance of a donation from Bee Bials for programming at the Madison Senior Center to be donated in, I mean, to be placed in the senior center donation account. Also, one thing I want to clarify while I'm talking about the finances of the city is there has been a claim that the city is 1.2 billion, B with a billion with a B, dollars in debt, and that information is incorrect. The city is not a billion dollars in debt. And with that, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Motion passes. And we'll move into presentation reports. And Mayor Finley.
No business tonight.
All right. We're going to skip District One and move to District Two.
Yes, we had, several of us were down in Tuscaloosa today for the SSUT or Internet Sales Tax Summit. We got a lot of information about what is happening with, there are certain cities who are suing the state regarding the internet sales tax. So we got updates on that. We got updates on potential legislation that could hopefully fix or help fix the issue with the disproportionate distribution of that tax. We also heard a lot of information about how the internet sales tax, which is 8% in our state, hurts our local businesses, which have higher sales tax rate. And be looking for more information that will be coming out on that. And also, be watching the news. This is a statewide issue, and there are a lot of other cities that are dealing with this. So just, it's time for us to all get educated about it and learn what it means to our city specifically, but across the state in general. This is hurting our schools, this is hurting our cities, this is hurting our businesses. We need help getting this fixed. And with that, that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. District Three.
No new business.
Okay. And we'll skip over District Four and move to District Five.
Well, Connie, I'm a little inspired by you in setting the record straight. So let me take a little stab at this as well. I've heard multiple public comments about how I, as council president, took away people's right to speak. And I just thought it would bear noting that Resolution Number 2021-268-R was the resolution authorizing a policy for public participation during city council meetings. And as you all know, in 2021, I was not council president, Greg Shaw was. And that resolution required a majority vote, and it was a supermajority vote, I believe, that passed that resolution. So I don't think I can take credit for doing that, but I certainly voted on it. And I wanted to set the record straight on that. I also wanted to thank the school system for inviting many of us on July 15th to the Community Partner Breakfast focusing on school safety. We had a great attendance of our SROs, Chief Gandy, but also Sheriff Kevin Turner and our DA, Rob Bouchard, were there. And it was a wonderful meeting, a breakfast meeting, and I just appreciate the invitation. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, ma'am. District Six.
Well, while they were elsewhere, I was down at the institute day with the school. And it's, I always go there just because of the excitement, to see this many teachers that excited to be going back to school, to serve our kids, to teach our kids. I mean, we had a big downtown because there's no place out here that's big enough to hold the whole staff, with all the teachers and transportation and everybody that worked so hard together to provide for our kids. And the excitement was just amazing. And it's just, it's so heartwarming to see the teachers so excited and to see those that have been there for 35 years, 30 years, 25 years, 20. It's amazing. I wish I had that list, they put it up on the board, and I didn't think to take a picture of it. But so many people are really giving their lives to care for the children, and I thought it was just awesome. And it was, it's always just so uplifting to go to this. And I appreciate the fact that our school system is so good with providing for the children. So that's all my comments tonight.
All right, thank you, ma'am. I just echo District Seven, I echo Councilwoman Spears' comments about the SSUT summit that was today, it was very informative. I appreciated a lot of the information. And I think one of the charges we got coming out of that was to start helping get that message out and start, you know, with your, your school boards and your county commissions and governments around you. So I took that as a charge of maybe sometime in September, October, maybe we look at some, some joint meetings or work sessions or things to help in that area about getting the information out. So be on the lookout for that. And then also, just so everybody knows, you got little kiddos a week from today. School starts back, so hopefully everybody can remember a week from today how to drive. We all seem to forget that on first day of school for about two weeks. So, and hopefully by then, I know I see Michael sitting there in the back, we should have, I think, Mel Road open again. And then cross our fingers, we'll see what can happen at the roundabout at Burgreen and Seagulls, so.
Brown's Ferry.
Brown's Ferry and Burgreen, that's right. Boy, I was about to get a firestorm. But all that being said, yeah, school's about to start back. And, you know, I will say the nice traffic we've been having during the summer while everybody's been away, everybody'll be back, and hopefully we'll have some new roads open and, and it won't be as bad as, as we all have seen it base. So, all right, we have board and committee appointments, and we have one for tonight, I think, Teddy, is that yours?
It's mine.
All right.
It's David Hall for Seat Five on the Construction Board of Appeals.
Okay, do we have any other nominations for that position? Okay, seeing none, we will appoint Mr. Hall by consensus. Okay, and we have no public hearings for tonight, so we'll move straight into department reports. And Facilities and Grounds is first up.
Facilities and Grounds Department has one resolution for your consideration tonight. It's Resolution 2025-238-R, Professional Services Agreement with AmeriEngineering Corporation to Provide Subservice Exploration, Geotactical Reporting, and Retaining Wall Design for the Slope Embankment at Toyota Field. There's $5,800 to be paid from the Multi-Use Venue Maintenance Fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Can we get the vote?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thanks, sir. And next up is Fire and Rescue.
Good evening. Have Resolution Number 2025-239-R. It's the approving of the purchase of fire department uniforms from NAFCO through the Buy Board National Purchasing Cooperative, discounts ranging from 8% to 26% off retail pricing to be paid from the fire department budget. This is just a renewal of a contract for one year with the option for two additional one-year terms.
Move to approve. Second.
We got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this one? No? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski. Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sorry, I got all choked up.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And now we have, well, actually, we do not have legal tonight, and now we have planning.
The first item is resolution, you can ignore that exhibit. They're going to take that down and take that down. Great, all right. Good evening. We have Resolution Number 2025-240-R. This is to order contract to trap ad signs in the amount of $154,586.09. And this is for Phase Two of the wayfinding program. There's money in the planning department budget currently, and those monies would be used. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on these?
How many signs does that include?
It includes, I wrote it down, there's 17, I'll say, larger signs. And then there will be an update to the three kiosks maps that we have downtown. So those, the, the sign doesn't change, but the maps on there will change. And then there are four parking signs, and there are a couple of other little, we're changing out some panels on signs. But effectively, 17 larger signs, the four parking signs, and then the three new maps.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we still doing the one monument?
Yes. The 17 includes that. So if you recall from the wayfinding program, we have monument signs that are at, I'll say, the entrances to the city. And so this phase would include one of those. And so that's a significant cost because those are larger signs. And, and then we would envision, if council supports it, one other phase to implement the rest of the program at some point in the future.
The monument sign you're referring to.
Mm-hmm.
Remember, what approximate size relative to the existing size?
It's a different structure. So the signs that we have up now are on poles. This is actually not on a pole. The particular sign that we'd be looking to do would go on Old Madison Pike, and it's, I didn't bring the dimensions, but it's a vertical sign. It's not, so you recall the, we have two forms of monument signs. One is a more of a horizontal sign, smaller, but similar to what we have on Hughes Road. And then there's sign, smaller, but similar to what we have on Hughes Road. And then there's another monument sign that's more of a vertical, and we don't have as much right of way to work with. And so that's what we'll be implementing or attempting to implement.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is proposed ordinance, Number 2025-235. This is for vacation of utility and drainage easement. This is on Chestnut. This is just a first reading. You can see there are two parcels there that are going to be joined. There's a dance studio proposed for this property. And because they're joining the parcels, the utility easement that currently bisects that property is no longer needed. So we're recommending removal of that, a vacation of that. And we'll be back at your next meeting asking for approval of that. Any questions? Okay. And the last planning item is proposed ordinance, Number 2025-236, also a vacation of easement. This is a first reading. And they're going to pull that exhibit up in just a moment. That is, there we go. Oh, there. So this is the Bella Woods subdivision, and the hashed area indicates property that had previously been in the floodplain and had a drainage easement over it. And the property has been elevated out of the floodplain. So the drainage easement is no longer, or the floodplain easement, I should say, on these properties is no longer needed. So we're recommending a change that would modify the boundary of that easement. Happy to answer any questions. Again, this is just a first reading.
Does this increase the number of lots that are available?
It does not. So when the preliminary plat originally went through the Planning Commission, these lots were identified. And it was just identified that there was this constraint, knowing that they were going to be elevating the property. So it doesn't change the overall project unit count.
I didn't think so, but I just want to make sure. Thanks.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Good. All right. Next up is police.
Good evening. Here for Resolution Number 2025-241R, and that's approving the purchase of police department uniforms from Gauls LLC through the Byboard National Purchasing Cooperative. What this allows us to do is get our uniforms at 15% off regular prices.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky. Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes.
Resolution Number 242R, that's authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Madison Board of Education for provision of crossing guards for the 25-26 school year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
And then finally, Resolution Number 2025-243R, after a little discussion with Megan, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Madison Board of Education for provision of school resource officers for the 25-26 school year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No. All right. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky. Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And Public Works?
And I'm glad Corey's not here. He'd be upset. Here comes my favorite person. You are my favorite person.
I got one Resolution, 2025-244R. It's authorization of, authorization, that sounded a little redneck, didn't it? Authorizing the purchase of a Mohawk lift tire balancer from Hunter Engineering Company for the state, from the state bid, $22,713.99 to be paid out of my budget, Public Works budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
You were my favorite person.
Mm-hmm.
Stumbled a little bit there.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I understood you, redneck. Thank you.
All right. Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky. Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. All right. Any miscellaneous business, miscellaneous business and announcements, Scott? No? entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. And we are adjourned.